Okay, can I call a meeting in order? Kim, please, uh, notice.
There was a conference committee meeting, September 21st, 2017. Adequate notice of the committee was given, according to the public meetings and known as scheduled, the council committee to express most sorry that the newspaper person popped out in South Florida, Florida, and filed with the county.
Roll call.
Kenya.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Spencer.
Here.
Marqueta.
Here.
Parsons.
Here. Please stand for the flag, smoke.
Nicholas Santos?
No.
Okay.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, consider the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to open public comment?
I'll make it.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Members of the public are invited up to the podium for, uh, three minutes to, uh, make any comments they would like about the ten items. And people from January is back. I saw her walk in. Oh, there may be some questions to listen to these folks, uh, about January, so. Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
I do have a January over in the house.
What's concerned is the associated property, Route 474, 1016.
We want your name and address for the record, please.
45, 107, 1016.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, guys. Sorry to interrupt you.
This concerns Route 474, property on Route 474, 1073. You might know it as the property formerly referred to as the Plaza Company. Uh, the January LLC acquired it several years ago. We're not sure, as a neighbor, I'm not sure what the status of this property is. Is it residential or is it residential? It's residential. Uh, there's two by ways to go through the hall. We see a few units. That's a part of the property. We also see a few light ingredients that convey a support for the property. January truck, truck, before he's in 1018, they go from 474 toward through a gate, uh, between, uh, a gate that separates the property. Uh, initially, we see, uh, lighting. There's a lot of people in the house. People in the house coming and going 24 hours a day. And, um, even driving by the property, you see many commercial vehicles that run down the street. You clearly, uh, label January, um, the equipment as part of the law. So then, basically, my question is, is this presidential property, commercial property, you weren't even aware of it? And then if they're not in place, what do you think?
I'm aware of the property. I don't exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if any change in zoning or-
No, it's a residential property.
Sorry, so it's still residential.
We have had one truck moved from there. I personally do see that. There's another one there. I don't know that there's any rules and limitations to them being on it, having their own personal company vehicles on it, but going from site to site is a problem. Um, the state is currently looking at the gate in the back. Um, hopefully I'll know more on that in the very near future.
Okay.
Thanks for your-
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? I think he's gonna cite some of the things you wrote about. That's why I gave you the heads up. Okay. And he gave me what he's gonna question, in case you need it.
I'm Wolf. I was a 305 Bradford Lane. Uh, just to put on record, I've received several months ago, uh, issues concerning the enforcement of our licenses, uh, that are being violated by January. Uh, specifically, there's only a few months gone. I wanted on the record, I'm referring to transitional buffer, 16 dash four, in allowances, 16 dash four point one four D, one, D two, D three, eight. Also, in allowances concerning the operation of the kennel, five dash seven, five dash seven point two, five dash eight, five point nine, uh, concerns enforcement. And I also wanna talk about the variance that was granted in the past and the enforcement of what was given to January in that, variance. As far as the transitional buffer is concerned, the state has, um, the state has indicated there is supposed to be a buffer zone. Uh, the business, there was a buffer zone prior to an expansion that took place since the latest variance. Uh, a big section of the area of, uh, buffer zone was removed without permission. Uh, I'm not speaking about the current bearings, that they were just denied, but the previous one. Uh, there was a buffer zone in many places around the property that was removed. If they were granted variance to certain conditions, what are the enforcement aspects of this board? Uh, the board told they can only have a certain number of dogs. The resolution is book 2013 dash 04. Uh, it specifically indicates in there that they're only allowed to have 60 dogs on the property at any one time. Over the last several years, it's shown, uh, the record, it's actually on record with the Long County Health Department, that they've been in violation of that. Uh, this township granted them a variance to have 60 dogs, and they have more than 60 dogs. Where's the enforcement as far as the township is concerned? If you're giving them the right to do something, then how are you enforcing it? It also has to do with the type of actions that the township is in a problem. The variance specifically states only dogs, and yet, the health department records show that they have other actions besides dogs there. There's a section in the, uh, variance about hours of exterior lighting. They have lighting that was on there all night long. You can see it from the road. You don't even have to look at the back of the line up. They had one spotlight they turned off. There's still another one that's on all night long. And there's other lighting that's been installed lately since they took out the spotlight. So, there's other lighting that stays on all night long. My question is, if you enforce, if you grant them a variance, and then you don't enforce it, what's, what's the sense of the law at all? If the board, if the township has granted them certain things they can do, and they go beyond that, where do you enforce it? We have an animal control board. We, we call, she said it's not her job. If you wouldn't have five dash seven, it is the job that the county person, that is their job. They are supposed to enforce it in respect of this company. So, these things are there. So, when I, when I spoke to you, I thought these things are these, but the book you read them, see specifically what I'm referring to. And then come back. I asked several months ago about these same items. They'll have the doors locked. They're the same roof. Still, the stuff has been removed between the properties. So, these issues have not gone away. And we'd like the board to come back to us with some kind of resolution to what you're doing with that. Okay?
I guess a lot of it wasn't yours, just more legal. I saw your name on the dot box. Do you wanna respond to that?
I, I can. Um, it's probably not all the answers that you want. There's a ton of this that's because of the latest, uh, variance request and, and the litigation that's going on, it does affect a respectable amount of the 14 one that you're referring to. Um, and until that kinda gets solved, there's some things. The landscape buffer is certainly an issue, um, and I'm probably gonna speak some language that's a little out of my character here, but the intent of that buffer and the true definition of it are, it's different. However, when it all gets solved in the long run, uh, I do expect some of that will need to be replaced. Um, so, with, while there's ongoing litigation right now, the new lighting, I don't know anything about. Larry's met with them. They brought down the, the high stuff. Was supposed to put things on timers, dim things up. Last time we were there, that appeared to be done. Now, if there's something new, I, I don't know much about that at this point. The, the barking, it's an ongoing issue, and you're absolutely right. It clearly states in our book about 15 minute time frame. I'm not a hundred percent sure how that applies to the kennel. I think it would. Um, that was the conversation I was gonna have with the township attorney tonight, because that now has just been, really been reinforced.
You can be good with the microphone, so it gets picked up to what, please? We're gonna have to talk with-
Right, 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 right.
The land use board plan is specifically indicating, in discussing the last variance, uh, the law concerning noise, and that if the noise regulations should be aligned with, and I believe it was state and federal, there were experts that testified, uh, at the variance hearings, indicating, not just experts from the objectives, but experts from January, that indicated there is currently a noise violation in that. Now, again, as far as this enforcement is concerned, if the township grants them things to have 60 dogs, and now there's a noise issue, and you grant them to build beauty, but it's a variance building, to have 60 dogs, and now there's a noise issue, and it's a violation of the law, does the community have to go, uh, to the state to get this resolved, or is this an issue? Because if the plan from the land use board said it had to be addressed, and apparently it's something that the land use board is aware of too. So, it's not just a local issue, because there are state regulations that must be followed, because it is a health issue.
Absolutely. Uh, I, I need legal advice. I can't answer that. But that will be discussed tonight.
Anyone else wish to make public comment?
John Gray, from the University of Bradford Lane. Um, partly a judge who's from January kennel. Uh, there should be questions, I was going to say, so bear with me. It does do with communications between, uh, the board and the DCA. And the question is, were the investigations of the DCA and the health department, uh, specifically, um, and maybe bought, did numbers from DCA or health department, did they block the township committee meetings? Their status updates? So, that's the first question. Second question is, what tools are good to use to bring January into compliance? Uh, let me have a good evidence and resolution to, uh, to address this, actually, lawyers, inspections, and compliance, and people acting. And the third question, does there fit any progress in training police officers for, for the zoning enforcement, and what's the timeframe for the training? And my personal question is, relating to the light, uh, lighting situation, uh, one though, the lights have to be done for January kennel, which is authorized in 2013, before the installation. And as far as I know, it's not enough. But it's one of the conditions, other conditions they had to make, sort of left their permanent stuff. So, that's about that.
Okay. Um, the DCA and the Board of Health being their own entities, I mean, we're having conversations. Uh, they're responsive, but not responsive. Uh, I am expecting some good information from the DCA this week. Uh, one of the inspectors, Pat Doughty, has personally told me that some information should be forthcoming. Um, the lighting test, Mike, we had talked about that, and you said that, uh, uh, finally engineering is capable of doing that. Um, can we, can we get it on your schedule?
Sure.
There you go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, sooner versus later?
I'll be out there next week. Yeah, what, the only thing that has to happen, which is difficult, but I have to obviously contact the owners and make sure that the lights are on.
Sure.
Hit the dark. Obviously, it starts now, what, at 7:30?
Right.
So, I go out there at, like, 8:30 and, uh, and walk around and-
Yeah, contact them, let them know.
No, no, no. But that's the only thing that could potentially hold it off.
Okay.
I need their cooperation.
There you go.
So, that's-
And as for the, the, the police training, that, that is certainly down the road. Um, there's a few other things that are being worked on, but, uh, as these classes become available. Chief, right?
Yes, I hope to-
Tony, hey, Dave.
...the neighboring town. He said there's actually no certification, however, and then you have to pay, however, um, putting off your out there with the knowledge of zoning. So, there is some training that you have to go through. There are a few classes and plenty of tests, but I'm looking at where they are all.
But in the meantime, we are still working in a basic book. That, the language is fairly simple. Um, it's a process.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, I'm Gloria Palace. I have a two problem. I would like to talk to the officer of January kennels. Um, I have a question. Do you have an update on the lawsuits that January, the lawsuits that January filed? I understand there's an initial conference on September 7th, the spring, but, but, you know, the state has, um, I didn't see anything in the public records, so therefore, one has been filed. I was trying to send your words when she went forward, and I'm asking a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Playing gun? Want you to close public comment?
I'll make it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we have some professionals here on the clock, so we wanna go into executive session, handle them, so, uh, we can cut down on their hours here. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
So, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion.
Say it.
Go call. Are we doing all in favor now?
Kenya.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Marqueta.
Yes, yes.
Martha.
Which one we gonna do first? Let's do, uh-
Let's do Eloise.
Eloise?
Yeah, we can make-
Okay.
Is that, that's, and then it out? But is this tape off from?
Yeah.
Turn that off?
It's not like that. I see that on this side.
Mike, that, uh-
She's the first instance. No, you can't do that.
Meeting with EPA. Is that 26th, fourth, um, October?
I have to connect her.
The meeting we discussed.
No, it's not.
It's today.
Okay.
It was Thursday. I think it was Thursday.
Need a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to do a little speech about-
So, we are in executive session, and the public sector discussion were, um, somebody tapped a deal, and 40,000, and the executive session will develop some kind of need for public, yeah, you know.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement granted between affordable housing in the township, let's discuss in executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Second. Roll call? Any, can I comment, your questions, or discussion? You really can't, so.
Roll call.
Kenya.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Marqueta.
Yes.
Parsons.
Okay. I guess we're gonna want to report, huh? Nope.
Paying the bills.
Paying the bills.
Yeah, so I got a couple.
Okay, good.
Some questions on, I just, something struck me. I saw that two computers were bought from, um, by, uh, Array Network Solutions. One for-
Yes.
$2,187, and one for $1,800.
Tell the executive, yeah.
Were they laptops? What are they, you guys?
I have a laptop.
I just found it expensive, 'cause I, I looked in the Walmart website, and the most expensive laptop on the whole website was 1,400 bucks, and we got a bill for $2,187. I just sent it excessive to me.
Is that PO in here?
All right, I just-
No, no, I mean-
Maybe just get more info on it.
I think-
Just as to what, what that encompassed.
Somewhere in here.
Just later on.
Right, somewhere in here, we have the, uh, the bill for that.
Yeah. I mean, you could, you could send me the info on it later, and we could talk about it, but I just, oh, the, the, hi, I just was wondering what it, maybe it was the software too. Maybe that's why. So, that's fine. They include the software. All right. Didn't mention what so, I just, I guess you can't fit everything on here, but that's, all right. And then the other one was, um, the, uh, the bill, the, the bill for Thomas Stewart Park lawn maintenance. Um, one of the members from the space committee had mentioned that it wasn't completed, so I'd like to hold that bill, the 1,500, 1600, right?
Who's under?
Ranger.
Ranger. Um, I don't know. I'm just hearing this, so, help me, I don't know if work. Anyway, what I'd like to do is just hold off on paying that until Mike and Joe can certify that the job was complete. You all right with that, Mike? Or that's just something for Joe?
September, huh?
Certainly more, yeah, Joe.
I, 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 uh, 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 uh.
Yeah, without, I don't-
All right. I mean, we could just hold off on that until-
He just, uh, he just got it last week.
Uh, but this, I was told it was-
It was a week, it was a week after the grow rate company was there spraying.
I was told half of it was done. That's all I know. I, I don't know.
And, uh, it was cut.
So, if Joe certifies it, then we pay it. So, we'll just make a conditional on Joe's certification. All right. That's all I have.
I got a couple here. Um, the synths, uh, and we had a discussion before the meeting. Kim, do we have a contract on that? The safety, they kinda fill up those safety boxes or whatever?
It used to be a biomedical, and then they sold the company's synths.
Yeah.
I want to ask.
All right. I think we should eliminate that service, 'cause last month it was 180 bucks, this month it's 320. You times it by 12, we're talking, you know, three, $4,000 a year for fill a Band-Aid box.
Are they replenishing the police cars and the medical supplies also?
I don't know, chief. Are they? Do you see a need for those? Uh, is there something that we can do?
Uh, I, I think we find a better price, and I agree with this.
Kathleen, you in White House, if, if you can go out to Staples or Walmart?
I would say we just buy what we need there.
It's not just, it's for, there's a lot of that, so, it's, we, we, we have to use
that. What do you get for getting a medical thing, um, from you?
I think that Ranger did. Are they saying he didn't cut out?
That's what I heard.
I was just gonna say, I think that the big thing here is you're gonna have to look through the eye wash thing, where you go.
That's all I know.
Not a 3,000, 23, 3 grand a year.
What they do too, is like the Band-Aid box, as it's expired, even if it's old, they grow lanyard. So, it's just a lot of stuff that's probably not being used.
Out, outdated, outdated.
Yeah, I mean, check it out.
But how often does, does your crew use it?
What's that?
How often?
Summer, summertime insecticide stuff, when we're out working in wet areas, it's checked every month.
Well, I think we can just like, like you, when you run the staples, to get a staple supply, you can go to Walmart. Last month, we spent, we spent $18, and I know it's, it might sound ridiculous, but we spent $18 for 100 eye wipes to wipe your glasses. You can buy a box for $4 over at Walmart. So, I'll make a motion.
And then the man, the man's time to go get it, so we add that.
No, we can, we, Joe, I'm not gonna spend $320 a month on that box. So, I'll make a motion, and the committee, they can decide if they wanna do it. Just times 320 a month, times 12, it's $3,600 a year.
That's three or four boxes, 3, 4, so that's not-
I have one, one thing, I, I think you have to think about that. Some of the things he checks, I'm sure, are ocean requirements, and who's gonna come and make sure that, like, the eye wash machine is clean, has got the appropriate solutions, that the solutions are up to date. So, I, I think you're paying for a little bit of liability relief there. I don't, you know, I think-
Safety blocks.
That, that's the only thing. So, it sounds a lot, but let somebody get hurt and wash the eye out with-
I'll look forward to that.
And the eye wash.
Yeah.
Yeah, how about if I contact them and have a-
I'll be with-
Back downstairs, we can get rid of that one.
No, have them come in. The rep is, they come in my office in Porcifany every month. I see the guy, they put the little Band-Aids and a couple of, you know, aspirins and the thing, I'm sure. We got one on the five different floors, so.
Yeah.
I just think it's a lot of money. Okay.
It is.
Um, the other thing that always bugs me, how often do we use that meter, that postage meter? At $158 a month. Times that by 12 months, that's 2 grand a year.
Um, all the, um, su-
Sewer bills?
Sewer bills go out on that? All the, um-
And we can buy the envelopes, we can buy the envelopes with the stamps already on.
All your first, um-
'Cause that does not include-
All the check stuff?
You wanna turn it off?
And, and, and the certified letters, like if I do certified mail, that's $6.
Yeah, but that's not included in the one figure. That's just the rental.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking postage.
No, 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 I'm talking about the rental. We're paying $2,000 a year for a machine.
Yeah.
You know, to put stamps on a machine, on an envelope. I think that's it. A little bit, but you know, when you add up 2,000, here's 3,000, there, you know, that's up.
No, I agree, but like I said, with the other thing, I, I just think the same just-
And the last month, we spent $2,000, and I know we have to use the bill, public defenders. So, there you go. No way to get that money back, though.
Yeah.
Well, I just think they have it in perpetuity.
Kathleen, I got one question for you. Um, Earthworks and Zagoda, they're not in this bill list?
These are last-
Yeah, but they're supposed to be held.
Zagoda, so I'm on the holding board.
All right, so I-
So, I was told to pay.
No, it's in the minutes that Earthworks and Zagoda were hold, uh, were supposed to be held until the traffic commits were, were here for plumbing.
I was told after the fact that you and Paul were up to the site and decided that-
No, the August minutes say Earthworks and Zagoda are being held. We had that three in the minutes. Because Zagoda didn't have its business registration, and Earthworks didn't have a plumbing commit with no inspections for the water line.
And I was not at that meeting?
Right.
And I'm just-
No, I know.
I was doing what I was told to do.
Okay. I'm just saying we held it in there.
But with that being said, well, that purchase order was actually signed pre that meeting, because it was a carryover from the month before until we had a meeting.
It was carried over from, uh, June.
Well, I don't know when it was carried over from, but the PO was signed.
Right.
And, um, and the hold came really afterwards.
It's been on hold since June, since the water line, I know permits to go in.
Mike, you wanna make a comment on that?
Joe.
That water line did need it from them. Is that correct?
No.
Do you want to end this now?
No, not right now, no, no.
So, not right now.
I see you did not.
And with that being said, I was the one that told Kathleen the bill had gotten approved, so she sent it out on my site.
No, that's good. You'll make a sign on that.
Aye.
What happened with the, I'll, I'll talk about the Earthworks bill. I, I, uh, this is the other thing, it's none of my business. There's no, okay. What happened was, was the hold put on the Earthworks bill, I think, two months ago, from my mistake. Then we had the meeting in the field, okay, like a couple days later. And then there was a, I don't know if I call it a resolution. It seemed like there was some satisfaction at your, at, at your end. I talked to Kathleen after, after the fact, and I said, did you hear from anybody on the township committee about the Earthworks bill? And she indicated that she, she had, and I don't want to speak real, and, and that the check was released. And I'm like, oh, okay. And that was, that was kinda the last, I heard anything about it, until, well, last month, you brought it up again.
When we held the bill.
Well, the, the problem was, the bill was already paid.
Right. I give you two sets. The first set is what's pending. The second set is, I'll pay the school taxes, 'cause I cannot wait on that. Maybe the county taxes. The second set is pay bills, that we nothing missed in the minutes.
All right. Like I said, we were holding for the permits, 'cause the, the, no permits, no inspections, no nothing. And that was after our meeting, that we had it that day.
Well, it, I'm looking for that parking.
Right. We'll discuss later on.
On these, on these two bills from razor lens, what do we wanna know about these?
Joe's gonna certify that the job was done. And if he certifies the job is done, then that, we go ahead and pay.
Okay. Well, they gotta be, we either, we're gonna include them in the bill pay list, or-
Well, how do we wanna handle that? Do we wanna include them in the bill list and have everybody sign them, or?
Yeah, I can just have the check, put it on the voting board, and we'll try to approve it.
All right, do it that way.
Do, do you have the dates there, or what?
Just has the one date, right? That says-
September 13th, Thomas Stewart Park.
That was right after they furloughed him.
Separate, uh, September 16th, uh, an extra top on the soccer field, so at the request of one of the rec, community people.
That, yeah, that there is, I'll have to, I called Linda that. I guess somebody from rec got ahold of him?
Yeah, that's what we had.
Yeah.
I guess one of the workers, and you outowed that.
A guy from rec stopped one of his guys, who was caught- A guy from rec stopped one of his guys, who was cutting, and asked, and they go back and recut the grass.
So you don't know if it was done? So we're, we're gonna hold this until next month, or what?
I'll, I'll call the staff.
Yes, 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 yes.
Soccer field, soccer.
We make the motion, so we make it with the, uh- Would it be okay if I asked, Mark brought up the fact that it wasn't, the job wasn't fully done, so maybe you could explain it?
Okay, go ahead.
If nobody from rec, on my board, by the time we're, never asked anybody to hold it, or what?
And-
If it was done, that's fine.
It was.
We'll talk about that.
Exactly.
Which cut was not done fully? Which date?
I, it was just, you said it was just cut last week, right, Joe?
Uh, that's, that's why I knew the date was last week.
Yeah, and I went up on Sunday, thirteenth was, uh-
Thirteenth was, yeah, the last one.
Yeah, I went up on Sunday, and the only thing that was cut was the front half, because they were waiting for the proof they cut. Only by the parking lot, it's cut, the whole park was not cut.
Derek, so Joe will look at that.
Okay. I'm not saying that that's long nine three, that's cut, but whatever phase it was.
Um, what are we doing with these? Are we gonna- I think we could approve them pending Joe's, and, and Joe, we could approve them, sign them, but not release them until Joe certifies it, okay?
Anybody done with questions already?
Yeah, I have the grow rate, the fertilizer for the park.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
You done with, you have one of the grow rate, grow lather?
Okay.
Um, did we approve that for any time? Fertilizing the park? When did we approve that?
Never discussed.
Never discussed. For two thousand dollars?
We approved, uh, then we approved seeding, isn't that part of the seeding?
Yeah, I read the thing, it said something about seeding, that's what I seen.
I mean, in order to have the seed in Germany, you need to have fertilizers, or?
There, there's a line item in, in the Earthworks contract for fertilizing, topsoil fertilized seed.
Is that what they did?
Right. I, I, it is, yeah, I understand, it's, as I understand, this was when we discovered the disease on the, not the athletic field, but the, the balance of the lawn areas. And what was once a dream, much, growth, went to white. And, uh, there was, uh, some quotes that talked to, from experts, and all the experts seemed to indicate that the way you got, you got a short window of opportunity, and to save this grass, you need to fertilize. So, uh, that's what happened.
Didn't somebody from Rutgers come up?
Was it Rutgers came up and did soil testing? And we had a very short window.
I think we did, uh, uh, Rutgers discussion, it was last day, right? Rutgers, did we talk about this? I know this came up before. Well, we approved seeding of the park.
We never approved the fertilizing.
Yeah, but we, we approved seeding, we approved seeding of the park, and seeding of the park can't happen unless it's fertilized, so, to me, it's part of the same approval.
Well, the overseed, just to put things in perspective, too, uh, from, from what I was told, I was involved in these conversations, the window of opportunity to fertilize was, was like, there was a week left. Okay. Now, Jeff, C.R.C., Earthworks, uh, and we just spoke about it this afternoon, is, has actually purchased new equipment, and is, is slated to reseed the entire park. If we did not fertilize when we fertilized, we wouldn't have been able to fertilize when he reseeds, which will be within the next week, apparently. So, from a-
So the fertilizer for him wasn't in, in his redo? Like when he reseeded the property?
Well, he hasn't reseeded the property.
I understand that, but I'm saying like, the, the fertilizing of the seed, was that in his run that he's doing also?
Well, yeah, no, that, that would've been, yeah. Now, the fact that-
So would he have paid that, or we would've paid that?
Well, no, we wouldn't have paid it. He, he was gonna do it-
And fertilize it.
-for the growth of the, 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 the grass here.
No, I'm saying it was his two thousand bucks.
Well, it wasn't needed for the seeding or not? We, listen, we had a line, wait, here's my question, we had a line item that said the park has to be seeded. We approved the seeding, would the park have been able to be seeded without that being done? Yes or no?
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I was trying.
The line-
I was told it needed-
Fertilizing, seeding, and mulching, that's the line item.
Alright, well, it's in the line item then.
Well, yeah, I think what, what Will's question is, it's, it's a separate contract, basically.
Yeah, if, if our contractor is seeding it and fertilizing it, why are we paying to fertilize it ourselves?
Well, from, from what I understand, and again, I was kind of just indirectly involved and involved with emails and phone calls and so forth, um, but it really came down to the fact of a really, really, really good price compared to other quotes that were, were secured, apparently, and the ability to get it done in a short period of time, and by the end of this apparent, this fertilizer window, relative to the disease. That, that was the, that was the key part of it, is, is that the disease, that red thread, whatever the heck red thread is, uh, that, that, the new grass caught. Uh, so, that, that's the way it kind of played itself out.
We need to fertilize it done, right?
Right, yes.
Like, like I said, my question was, was the contractor gonna fertilize it? Could he have done it under what he was doing then, or did we have to do it ourselves to get it done?
Again, I think what Will's saying is, we understood you was a different person than Earthworks to do this. Should this bill have really went to Earthworks rather than, that's what he's asking.
You know-
Because we can approve it, fertilizing it anytime.
I, okay, is, to be honest with you, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna punt on this, I think Mark, I'm sorry, I think you should really talk to Mark. I mean, Mark really handled this. I was involved in discussions with Mark.
You have an answer for this question, it's been going on for twenty minutes?
I'm just, you guys may not speak if you like.
Yeah, go ahead.
So has everybody noticed that the park being browned, the, the, the grass was turning brown? It had a disease. So, there was two things we could do. Have to pay somebody fifty-five thousand dollars to reseed the whole park, or spend three thousand dollars, was the first price I got, to fertilize the park, to try to generally improve the grass. Obviously, something that happened, Rutgers turf, Rutgers turf management team and Liberty sod farm both came out and looked at it. They both did that on a favorable note, no charge. They both concurred that it was a disease called red thread. They've never seen it run through grass the way they had there, but they did say it could've been possibly because of the dew spell state of the grass, it was fairly mild. They never pinned it down a hundred percent, but that's what they felt. And then they said the cutting technique, letting it grow so tall, and then hacking it down to a low rank, and then hitting it again, could've been part of the added problem. So I said to the guy, Brad Prohm was involved in it too, he said, "We need to find out if we're gonna lose the whole field or not." We spoke with Jeff from Earthworks, he said, "I believe that I fulfilled my duties, my specification was to have grass grow, I can't help it that you didn't make me..." Fine, I took it towards work. Had them out, they said, "If you fertilize it with twenty, ten, ten, it should regenerate itself, but you have a small window of time, means you just went through the latter part of the summer, and we usually don't like anything down after suspended for, and you probably know more than me on those windows, if it's kinda anything to do."
Well, I, I do, but we'll wait till the end.
Sure. Uh, I took professional advice, I saw approval through the O.S. board. I priced it out three ways, it was five thousand, three hundred dollars from, we got to do some landscaping, three thousand from the initial gentleman, I don't have, I don't have his name on me, and I got a determination from a local farmer who was the best help, that said for a lower price, you can get GrowRight to do it. Their outgoes vary nineteen hundred and something dollars. They did it within thirty-six hours of me telling them to do it. I did gain approval, I could buy both emails, I don't know, the process that I got, they went through, but I did verify it was there, unable to be done. So, I, on your approval side, I'm not sure.
So, you came to me asking that question, I had talked to Mike about it, and my, and I, I just stated it before, to me, this was part of the seeding approval. That's how I understood it. I understood that we couldn't do the seeding without this being done. I was also told we have to get it done now, right? So seeing as it's part of the seeding approval, we needed to do the seeding, we already proved seeding, has to be done now, I said, "As far as I'm concerned, it's already been approved, it's part of the seeding approval."
To answer Will, to answer your question about was it, was it needed for the grass to grow for the beginning seeding? He did fertilize the beginning portion, so he did his end, and I think he was gonna touch up the second end, and when he said he was gonna seed, he told Mike and I, "I will seed more than what I really have to, according to the contract, but I'm not gonna fertilize and pay that money."
But on, on the contract end of everything, the initial was the seed and fertilize, that was the line item, not to re-fertilize it without spending two thousand dollars out of, out of, not approved.
From the open space.
Hold on, hold on.
This did come up, I remember talking about this, I don't know what meeting was that, but it was a very short window. But it was, it's just, it's just simple.
Yeah.
Let's, let's propose the bill, if it goes through, it gets paid. I mean, how long are we gonna talk about that?
Why, we just approve it now? If that's the problem.
You wanna make us a motion to pay this purchase order? Because I mean, we're going around circles now.
My, my question-
It's a yay or a nay.
A question in, in the beginning was, was Earthworks going to fertilize-
Yeah.
-when they were going to reseed, when they said they were coming back, rather than us spending the two thousand dollars?
I don't think he agreed.
But I wanna fit the window, the window a lot.
He never agreed, he was coming back to reseed.
He fulfilled his obligation.
Right.
He fulfilled his, fulfilled his obligation.
No, I mean, I know where Will's go- Jeff was coming back to reseed, somewhere along the line, somebody approved a fertilizing application, which was, he clearly needed, I mean, we're not, the question is, where was it being paid from and who authorized it? Now, Mark says that he got authorization from somebody from open space.
I just told you, I didn't know, first of all, I didn't authorize the links, I didn't think it needed authorization, it's part of the seeding approval.
Yeah, but it was already part of the seeding approval at the beginning.
Well, then I misunderstood it.
At the beginning, right.
Then I misunderstood it. Because I was told, you know, to get the seeding done, need authorization, I wasn't-
What, what are we, what are we talking about? It had to be done. It had to be done. Well, the question is, I think the question is, what budget was it coming out?
Well, it's open space, it's fair, it's open space. Yeah, I mean-
So you wanna let, put it in the motion, or?
Just put it this way, everything was done with good intentions.
Right.
Alright, there's no bad intentions here.
Everything was made with intentions, right.
So, it just had to be done.
Okay. You wanna do this one separately? You wanna make a motion to pay?
I'm looking for a motion to pay purchase order seventeen-
Oh, wait, do I have a motion on the floor for the bill?
No.
No, okay.
So I'm looking for a purchase, a, a motion to pay purchase order seventeen one zero nine zero to grow more, and the amount is one thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for fertilizer.
I'll make it.
Anybody want a second? I'll second. Any comments, questions, or discussions any further? Roll call, please.
Enyaq?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
I'll for, uh-
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes. Anybody else have anything before I look for a motion for the rest of the bills? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to pay all bills, with the exception of purchase order one seven one zero eight six and one seven one zero eight four, the Finelli Consulting, until after we have a discussion in executive session regarding some of these issues. So, that's the motion for that, and then, we have the other two purchase orders separately, so pay it. No, I think I gotta do the other order. I'm looking for, I have to exclude these, okay. And we're also gonna exclude purchase order one seven one zero five seven and one zero five five, until verification from the D.P.W. supervisor that this work was done and can't be paid. I'll make the motion as Bob stated.
A second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion on these? Roll call.
Enyaq?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Yes.
Want to make a comment about running them?
Oh, yeah, you know what, yeah, Frank wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, just, just a quick comment, um, uh, on a personal note, uh, recently, our town, um, one of our former mayors and town committee, uh, town committee person, Brian Visconti passed away, so, I just, on behalf of the township, and myself, obviously, um, just wanna offer condolences to the family of Brian Visconti. He was, um, I got to know him in two thousand and three, when I was on the town committee, I served with him, I was proud to say that I voted for him for mayor. Um, he was a very kind person, um, a very nice, a very good family man, his children grew up in the town. Um, he served, uh, as mayor, as a town committee person, and he was also a school board member.
I served on-
No, no, served on, on a school board, so, um, I just wanna take this opportunity to offer my condolences to him and his family, um, and he will certainly be best. Thanks.
Anybody like that, comment? Uh, you know, Brian, when, you know, he was battling a terrible disease, you know, but he always had a smile on his face. Even, no matter what we discussed, whether here, when I served with him, or on school board, always had that smile.
Okay. Approval minutes, gonna be okay doing it as a block, does anyone have any questions about any special ones? I have one question, I, I spoke with Kim, I'd like to approve the, um, the June fifteenth minutes, um, with one correction to it, pending the correction or, does anyone want me to word it? No. As amended, the amendment is just to add my response to one of the, um, one of the public comment questions. I responded to it, I just wanted to be part of the record. Okay. Anybody else have any, any question on that?
Maybe September from July.
We got it. Well, then we'll have to do it separately. So, okay, let's do June fifteenth, then we'll do July fifteenth, then I think we'll do seventeen, twentieth, seventeenth as a block, right? Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of June fifteenth, twenty seventeen, as amended by Kevin and Marqueta. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any, any other comments? Roll call.
Enyaq?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.[1633.62] Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, July 15th, 2017, looking for a motion to approve those minutes. I'll make it. I'll second. Roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Dean.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the July 17th meeting, the July 20th meeting, and all the 17th meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second it.
Okay. Do they have any comments, questions, or? Okay, roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes. Resolutions, Madam one, 201773, was authorizing the redemption of tax liens, uh, on properties the lien holder was the US Bank, uh, blocking lot numbers are wrong when they get resolution. I don't think it helps anybody to read them, so, uh, and make the motion for this resolution?
I'll make the motion. Second it.
Roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Yes. Kathleen? CFO, you have anything? Salary orders? What tab salary orders on?
It's tab three.
Tab three?
And, uh, no changes from tab three.
Okay, so we're just looking for a second reading on the salary orders of 201707, which establishes the salaries and hourly wages of the township officials and employees of the township of Greenwich for 2017, um, retroacted to January 1 of 2017. So, we need to take a vote on this now for, okay, I open for public comment.
I'll make that motion.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wish to come, make a comment about it? Motion to close?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, now we're looking at motion to adopt where it's 201707. Do we have any question? No, after the second, we're, I'll go for that. Okay, anybody make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Second it. Okay. Now, comments, questions?
When was the last time the, uh, municipal clerk had a raise, percentage raise, Kathleen?
The CFO.
When was the last time that the municipal clerk and the CFO had a raise?
Um, not since I've been here, uh, 2015. So, I mean, that's since I've been, I don't know about before that.
Three or four years? I'm just making that note.
Future. Okay. Anybody else, comments, questions? Roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes. Okay. First up for me is the police department report. Chief Hummer, you wanna make any comments for it, or review the report?
Uh, yes. I agree. Just the, uh, the whole, uh, that's what I'm calling it.
What tab on? A four. I got it. Thanks.
Five. Four. Four.
As many of you know, our car burglaries, that's, uh, like the, uh, the municipal car burglaries we had in 2006, uh, five common issues where, where we associated that, uh, did, uh, end result with arrests and that, two dogs, two deer. Uh, we'll see our arrests and the twelve, adult arrest, two deer mile arrest, although many of those car burglaries, you count that as multiple arrests, forty six arrests, but technically the same person. Uh, three additional report, uh, cases assigned to the detective bureau, three closed. And just a, uh, brief note for overtime this week. Our overtime hours were down thirty-nine hours last month, uh, compared to previous, uh, August, about the fifteenth, uh, and Tuesday, our September, um, the first is September sixteenth, we are seventy-three point five hours under overtime, reduced by forty percent. And at this point, we're at, uh, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars less from months to months, from, uh, Thursday of September two thousand and sixteen, between the first and fifteenth. So, I'm trying to push an edit.
I'd like to commend you on your work on that, uh, car burglaries, and you had to pursue such a sorry morning. In fact, one or two residents have commented about how nice it was to see a fully functioning police department responding to an incident and handling it. So, uh, I guess give some kudos to the guys, um, at least me, I guess all of us.
Thank you.
We, uh, as I said, uh, this week, before, I wanted to be, uh, worth everyone for seeing this, they worked out, we're looking for them. So, uh, hopefully we can get it for next week, we'll bring it up. But also would mention that, uh, community team, uh, assisted us with the, uh, recovery of a lost, uh, student from the school the other day, got on bus, so I just recommend that, uh, spot him.
Right place, right guy.
Hey, are the, when are you gonna get that card done with the letters?
The lettering on it, I've been sending emails to, uh, a vendor that I have, that I got a little less, uh, less, um, than our previous vendor, it's not getting back to me, unfortunately, I think that's going back to the other guy, it's a hundred dollars more, but, uh, I think it may.
Yeah, it's been a while.
I don't wanna wait like that for the new vehicles and put the letter on it.
Yeah, alright. Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, recognize October of 2017 as domestic violence awareness month. Uh, do we have, you have a confirmation?
It's tab seven.
Seven?
Second page.
Okay. So basically, we got, I got a letter from the Domestic Abuse and Sexual Assault Crisis Center of Orange County, asking that we'd recognize the month as the Domestic Abuse and Sexual Assault Month, Recognition Month. So, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we support this group, uh, basically, the acronym's DART, but, um, in their endeavors and recognize the, uh, the impact of domestic violence and sexual assault on our citizens, not only here, but across the country, especially our most vulnerable children. So, uh, I'm looking for, I'll make the motion that we, uh, recognize the month, and I'm looking for a second. Second, anybody have any comments, questions, or anything? Roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes.
Can we make sure it goes on the website for some type of?
Accept the police report.
No, a motion to accept the police report. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Land use board setback ordinance, Mike, what's the deal? Alright. The deal is that we have first reading last month here, it got kicked to the land use board as required for review.
Well, that's not required, it's a courtesy, right?
No, absolutely, no. A, a, an ordinance that is within your land use section of your code book, is required to be sent to the land use board. Okay. Uh, the land use board, what, if you recall, the, the new ordinance, uh, kind of had a ratio of lot size to accessory structure setback. Well, they, the land use board, uh, really didn't seem satisfied with the structure, and there was some other, like, typos in the, in the ordinance, I guess, things were, that's, were stupid stuff. Uh, so, in summary, and I actually saw a letter from Maria here, which I didn't notice until I got to the meeting tonight, uh, there was a letter from Maria, a letter from Maria Andrews to him, uh, basically citing two items. The ordinance has several significant typos and errors. Uh, the proposed setbacks do not accurately capture the land use board sentiments regarding what the appropriate setback requirement should be on various sized lots. So, uh, based on this, I mean, you still could technically go to second reading and adopt. I don't know, I'm not suggesting you do that. Um, and it's not advertised for tonight, but for second reading. I would, oh, it is?
Yep.
Oh. Okay, I didn't see that, where is?
No, no, it's not on the agenda for public.
Oh, it's not on, okay, but.
Cause I received it.
Okay, cause it's got the what? Okay, so I was gonna say, I didn't see it on here.
No, it's advertised for public terms.
The.
Mike, I could probably shorten it if you wanted to jump in.
Well, the letter closes with Beth McManus is supposed to give her, give the ordinance another crack, and re-present something to, my recommendation would be, that should be your motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Alter that to do a new, to retrofit the ordinance, massage it, tweak it a little bit, and have it come back.
Then what happens to the initial approval? Do we have to?
We just let that die? We just have to do a second reading?
We just let it die?
You just redo first reading?
Uh, redo a first reading, okay.
Okay, so you wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion to have Beth look over the, um, the setback ordinance and come up with recommendations.
Anybody want a second?
Second it.
Comments, questions, discussion? Roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta?
Yes.
Marson?
Yes. Okay, listen, resolution seventeen seventy-four, opposition legislative proposals regarding the open public meetings act and open public records act. What's this about?
It's tab seven. It came from the, uh, I'm sorry to touch. I took a little. And ask you to send.
Can you summarize it for us, or someone else?
So, there are two cent ago that are out there that would, uh, even more onerous than they already are, significantly more, i- if they're the versions I've seen. But, um, so, the Clerks Association, who are the ones who have to deal with this and stuff, but Beth understands just how difficult this would be, um, are asking towns to do a resolution, asking the legislature to reject these two bills, and to draft new legislation that would modern, modernize open and open public meetings act.
So it would also cost us a lot more money. We're spending enough money now on open requests, so.
Same words that I've seen.
Well, could you give us, like, what makes them wrong? Let's give us one example.
I didn't pick on the link with what the actual, uh, bill had.
Is it fine for response lesson that it was?
I remember it was lesson, but it was more things you could request, and maybe, maybe what the time was lesson. I think it went from seven to five.
Maybe we should have.
It's more about, for the, it's more about for the, uh, taxpayers of the town, um, especially the clerks, um, this bill doesn't protect us from abusive harassing and purposefully confrontational individuals who submit, uh, multiple requests for no legitimate reason.
And I, and I think part of what you're asking is not only for them to reject these consumers, but to understand that we live in a very different world than when open was created, and to modernize it. So, for example, if something's available online, should someone come in and, and waste your clerk's time, where she can say, the link is on the website, you can get it from the website. Or, you know, things about the open public meetings act and advertising your meetings, should you have to put it in the newspaper and advertise these different things? There's just things that they can consider, which they have it. Instead of just adding, adding to the outdated with more onerous. It wasn't just the open public meetings act, because the open, sorry, not just the open public records act, but also the open public meetings act, which would, you know, how you have to notice your meeting. I think that was a lot of your noticing of the meeting, how far ahead of time you had to notice. It was really putting some restrictions on your executive sanctions and things like that.
Are there any others? Are there any other bills, uh, something going the other way? Like these, how much we spending on public notification?
Well, oh, it's ridiculous.
Ridiculous.
I'm glad everybody knows this. I'm willing here to have the attorney redact a ridiculous open request, you know, so.
Did we spend over eight thousand, was it?
Oh, it's definitely, uh.
No, just to publicize our meetings in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah. I know why I left it on the website.
So everybody knows.
People in newspapers are like.
Just to publicize our meetings, ten thousand dollars a year. Close to that, right?
Sometimes, sometimes they're official papers, the Star Gazette.
We already went through that.
I've never seen, I've never seen, but no, I've never seen a print copy of the Star Gazette.
And most likely.
They pay money, and the only place to see a copy of that ad is if you go online and look, if you're going online to look for, I know that they're trying to balance that there's, you know, an older population who they do read the newspaper, they do read the, you know, the public notices section.
The price has been afforded.
And I think when Governor Christie had a bill that was trying to modernize a little, and, and that, they called it the, uh, the press called it the revenge.
Yeah, yeah.
They thought he was trying to blackmail the newspapers, because they went after him. Um, and a lot of the, um, push behind that was from the newspapers, because they get a lot of money for the foreclosure notices, because there's a lot of foreclosure notices. In my opinion, you could still let them publish those in the newspaper, and let the towns who have a better process, as long as you can, you know, check four boxes, that this is how you get it to your public, you know, we advertise at the beginning of the year, we put it on our newspaper, we have a.
A website.
Email blast for any resident that wants to be on it. You know, if you could check those things off, then maybe you shouldn't have to do it that way. No one's really gotten there yet, but this certainly doesn't make it any better, these make them, are worse.
So you recommend that we do adopt it?
It's the version I saw, the last time I looked at it, it was pretty.
I read through this pretty good before, it made a lot of sense.
To oppose it?
No, to, uh.
To adopt it.
To adopt it. Which is opposed.
Which is opposed.
Right, right, right. Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion?
Well, no, make the motion, no, no.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution seventeen seventy-four.
I'll make it.
Second it, Will? Okay, comments, questions, discussion?
So I don't oppose it, I just didn't get a chance to read it, so I'm gonna abstain only for that reason. I, I pretty much support it, though. I, I like the fact that, I do think people do take advantage of the clerk and the town and.
The problem is when people make requests they already have, not because you know they already have, they make the request anyway, or they can get it somewhere else, and they make the request.
Yeah. Anything else? Questions, comments, any, no, roll call.
Henya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marqueta? Abstain.
Yes. Frank, you're up.
Okay, um, the flagpole bids, do we have, is everybody getting a chance to look at that?
I handed that out.
Phil handed it out. The lowest.
It's forty-five fifteen.
Yeah.
Was it ten inch?
Yeah. Yes, a couple notes on this. So, this was just for the, um, I guess, for the product itself, right, for the poll. The, uh, the Booster Club has, um, volunteered to do the labor. So this is just for the material. So, um, I just need a motion to.
Accept.
Yeah, accept the, uh, flagpole, uh, bid from, from Poltech.
Yeah.
The ten foot pole?
Are you looking for a motion?
The motion.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions, comments, discussion?
I just wanna see, uh, I think I mentioned it as the open space, but I watch the COW flag fly below.
Sorry? Yeah. Yeah.
I'm good with that. I got a nice POW, I'm in the back of my motorcycle, so.
My question, this doesn't interfere, because we had that in the bits deck, food and park project, but that doesn't.
We felt, we did item, Will, which we did in awards, so it's perfectly fine. Okay. Roll call.
Questions or anything?
Okay, roll call.
Kenya?
Yes.
Yes. I got it, I got it.
Marketa?
Yes, yes. Okay, um, oh, Community Day, the Saturday, um, just one thing of note that Kim brought up, the signs are advertising one o'clock to, was it six? And it's actually really noon until six, so just to make a note of that, may want to put it, I don't know if you have it on, you have it on the left side already, yes, so...
Please tell us.
Do we wanna talk about the water liners? Mike, you're gonna take care of the water line, you're gonna speak about the water line and the resolution and the whole meeting on that?
Uh, yeah, yes.
I don't know, is that an executive, is that one, okay, is that an executive issue?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's not.
You wanna do it under your report?
I wanna do that.
You wanna do it under report? That's fine, I'll pass on it.
You can do that.
Uh, the one thing is the Sampson and Shaffer contracts.
Uh-huh.
Did you have that?
Yep.
Okay, you got it.
Waiting for attorney approval.
So, on the Sampson contract, I would ask that you just, you approve it conditioned upon our community final approval, so maybe contract itself, you have to give the majority of the documents, so I...
So, we're looking for a motion to approve the case two contract upon attorney review. Wanna make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it upon attorney review.
Second, I have my second.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Epstein.
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Epstein.
Marketa?
Yes, yes. How about the playground equipment?
Um, that one is gonna need to be changed, so you could approve it conditioned upon us...
Language change?
...contract, that you can see, you know, it's a significant contract, and, paragraph long, so...
Okay.
We, there's some documents we need, there's some things we need to put in.
Uh, so maybe we...
We'll take care of it, as long as you tell us it's okay, we take care of it, and you can approve it conditioned upon us putting it in the right format and getting the appropriate document.
So, I'm looking for an approval for the playground equipment for Thomas Fort Park, pending the review by the attorney and the rewriting of the contract.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second? Epstein, one second.
Is that top register for, you're gonna announce the dollar?
One hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and ninety cents.
That's why we wanted to have a review.
Okay, that's why. Is that in our book, that contract, or?
Uh, no.
Oh, so you guys wanna look at it. Any other comments? Anything else? Say contract.
The educational one.
Any questions, Tom?
Okay, roll call.
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes, yes, that's all I got.
Will, you're up.
Um, I did a, made motion for the animal control report, first update, kinda quiet this month with all the cats.
I'll second that motion. Any questions, comments, roll call?
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes, yes.
Joe, do you have anything major with PPW or just the report?
Yeah, I got the report, if you want me to review it.
Yeah, if you want mine.
All right, PPW report, filling graph wise, I'll refer to storage building bid with Mike addresses that in his report. Still working on, still working on paperwork for the emergency generator. The fuel and gas pump, changing the tanks and stuff, spoken Kathleen, there's twenty-five thousand dollars into that capital budget. The state bid, the low bid was, and that's a state contract, was thirty-two. I'd like to probably refer till next month to see what the PPW budget has left in it, maybe to get that project done, fuel tanks, and like I said, right now, I know we have security cameras and stuff, but they're really not secure, and we wouldn't notice anything this way here, to secure the, the gas facilities out there. Also, to go along with the Community Day, Connor Crawford finished the Eagle Scout project in Geneva out by the pavilion, has all been rehabbed, new cedar roof put on it, painted, um, it looks really nice, so while you're out there, take a look at it, and he's working on his paperwork, I signed a couple forms, just as Flag Day for him, so as soon as it's all certified through the police scouts, I'm sure we'll have another certificate or award to, to give out, but he did a, did a really nice job. So, take a look at that side of it. Um, what, on the, on our list yet is the police chief's wall down there between him and the secretary, um, and also the cleaning up of the debris, uh, we were able to get the blacktop and milling jobs in a little bit ahead of time, so the debris for Palm Storm Park is scheduled for the week of the twenty-fifth, once we get through the Community Day here, we'll get that taken care of. Um, PPW, the township cleanup setup for Friday, October thirteenth, and Saturday, October fourteenth, and we'll also be taking electronics, um, there's still a feed for screens up to thirty-two inch, I think it is, but the abilities that we handle on that force, so we just have people provide a check to abilities, and we'll separate the electronic things and take that to them during that time for cleanup also. Um, the fall leaf collection program, I'd like to get started the week of October thirtieth, and it'll run till September twenty-second, um, we'll canvas the whole town during them times every day during the week. Busiest times are right after the weekend when people seem to have time to bag their leaves and stuff like that. Um, the paving projects, uh, at the time I made my report were underway, not done, standing plan was finished today, Mike has the final numbers and stuff, a couple, couple small complaints come through, uh, got one from the county road department about some pack oil at the Amair South Main Street and one seventy-three, I'm gonna run a loader down there and scrape it off. They tried to get me to go out to Asbury Willows and take care of their, it was our job there, I said, "No, absolutely not, not, not my town there, you're really being handled." Phil Confall's told me they're milling and paving out starting next week, or Route thirty-one to seventy, so I ain't working on it. Um, and, uh, during that, they found we had to repair two storm drains that fell in on New Billy's Road after they milled, and a sinkhole opened up on Greenbridge Road, which, uh, our guys took care of, so everything's handled through that. And, um, we took care of some, uh, parking lines for Chief Hummer out where the school on Winnebago Boulevard, Daniel Drive, and Dory Place, he asked for some lines to, away from the stop signs, and I ran into a little bit further, there's also, uh, on the other side, so twenty-five feet from a crosswalk, you're not supposed to park with it, so that's all marked, but we put it on the road instead of on the Belgium block, so people's Belgium block curves and run out in the morning, yellow. Um, and the DPW, uh, equipment was ordered as soon as everything was approved, and I issued POs, we're just waiting deliveries, there's just different time periods, so that's it.
So, I'd like to stay there, you're gonna get fired on that, right? You wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the DPW report?
I'll second. Any questions, comments?
One quick question, the day you do the cleanup, um, they're gonna be able to bring the electronics and write somebody a check right then and there that day? Because right now it has to be done in advance.
I think they got, if they have, if they have that, when they're obtaining their permits, get that.
Get it.
This way here, I don't want the guys handling checks to try to keep track of it.
Right, right.
They stay here.
Okay.
So, at that time, if they have electronics and TVs up to that size screen, take care of that while they're getting their permits for their cleanup.
What's the max size TV screen? That's accepted? The national size TV screen?
I think it's a thirty-two inch screen.
Thirty-two?
We have cameras hanging out there, that's for thirty-two.
Okay.
And the other thing I have is with the fire company...
We're gonna do a roll call, yeah, for the...
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
With fire company with Joe, uh, first reading, it's ordinance number, uh, two thousand seventeen dash zero nine, um, in ordinance amending ordinance authorizing to sale the property to, uh, property, be it a township of Greenwich County of Warren State in Jersey to the Storage Building Volunteer Fire Company, number one, for a nominal consideration pursuant to NJS A forty-eight, colon, twelve dash twenty-one. Uh, most of that.
That's just, we don't have to do it in public area, right? First reading, right? Motion for first reading?
No motion.
You want a motion, anybody second?
Second.
So, roll call?
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Thank you, and just, just a brief update, we, we know it don't look like we're doing work, our geotechnical work has been done, reports have been submitted, uh, we did a per test for the su, uh, something, Gordon Halt was there, did their paperwork for us, uh, site plans on its way, uh, building design is going to electrical engineer and final designs for that, um, and our financing is probably near the end, we got a couple more sheets, our pre-application, then they said the application process, pre-application fills out most of them, so, uh, things are moving, even though you don't see dirt moving up as a lot.
Do you have a schematic or some kind of elevation rendering at all of it?
Uh, no, we're working on that.
Oh, okay.
We're working on it, and also, we've had a conceptual, uh, meeting, the fire departments and our engineer, with the county engineer, for some guidance, so we tried to save some money with not having to do plans over time for the cycle, and they also offered the rendering to, we get to a certain point, the forward order review, so we can stay on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any else, Tom? Um, okay, Joe? I mean, the motion for text to what, the report, what's it in tab four?
Four, regular text.
I'll make a motion, accept the report.
We'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
He's second, okay.
I'm trying to hear you well, sorry, okay. Any other comments, questions on the text, the report, roll call?
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes.
Yes. School recreation meeting, October sixth is what we're scheduling for, uh, a get-together with the rec department, the chief of police, a member of school board, and superintendent to discuss some issues that we have over at the middle school during some recreation, so, that's on October sixth. Um, we had a meeting yesterday, two and a half hour meeting with the EPA, uh, Rio Tenth was here, that's gonna be doing the, paying for the water line that's coming into the Pay Center development in other parts of town. There's a hundred and nine homes that will be getting public water, um, I think we've got about forty-four, forty-five homes that have not agreed or have not turned in their paperwork yet, so, let's see, sixty...
Sixty percent.
Yeah, we're at sixty-four, sixty-five, yeah.
Sixty-four, sixty-five people have...
So, I happened to talk to Kensington tonight, he sent his in, so...
Oh, okay.
Uh, and there's, there are less included people that are no longer there, so, I told him, they have, uh, individuals going out various times, you know, the day, uh, to try to get the people to sign up, you know, so, uh, I told him, whenever it's asked, I'll go out and knock on the door, a lot of these people I know, so...
This is people in the audience, that's a remedy of the EPA's requiring from the Old American Campaign on Thirty-One, calls the pollution issue all the way down into Greenwich through Franklin and everything, so they're obliged under this agreement to, uh, put this, uh, water service into the Pay Center section of our township, so, we're not doing it, we're not paying for it, the EPA's...
Well, we are paying for it in the sense that, uh, we have an ordinance, and Joe's there, we're gonna get twenty-eight U fire hydrants, and that's gonna add eighteen thousand dollars next year to our municipal budget, so...
I don't think we actually can.
Well, yeah, well, okay.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, when the project's done, you know, all the lines are in, there's twenty-eight U fire hydrants, uh, and...
Two fire.
So, uh, that's about eighteen thousand, and we pay over a hundred thousand dollars now for fire hydrants in this town, so...
Yeah, but your insurance is cheaper if you're close to a fire hydrant.
Yeah, but if you take, like I told Phil, get a deck, from my days as an insurance broker, you have an eight hundred dollar premium, you get eight percent off or ten percent off, what is it, eighty bucks?
That's about dinner.
So, uh, we're gonna schedule a meeting for October twenty-sixth, uh, and that's going to be, they're requesting the mayor there, and there's many people from the town council to be at that meeting, the EPA, federal EPA in New Jersey, uh, EPA, health department, uh, Aqua will be there, we're gonna have a forum, we're gonna advertise.
No, we, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna advertise it?
We're gonna have to advertise.
All right, just let, I'm gonna have to...
October twenty-sixth.
Well, my question yesterday, I was at the meeting with Bill, my, my question was is really to train, this is gonna be a meeting at the municipal building, I see Joe makes you all up, I see you in the fire, part of the building. If they come not together, just as interested parties, that, that's all they are, it's not their meeting, it's the EPA's meeting, be that or not?
No, if they sat in the audience, didn't talk to each other, and no one asked them any questions, technically, no. However, if you feel there could be a chance that someone could ask a question, and someone wants to say something, or do you guys wanna sit together, you know, it, when all of you get in the room, people say, "Well, they must be, the three of you could be standing outside talking about the Yankee game last night, and the three of you together, people assume you're discussing town business, because how could you talk about anything but town business when the three of you together?" So, if there's no harm in it, and you're having it here, you might as well just advertise it if you have the time to do it, just to be on the safe side in case something comes up, but...
Well, we're gonna have a forum, because it's gonna cost us how much of an advertiser we have to do? Costs us eight hundred dollars a ticket?
Well, I mean, what, I don't need to go there, you gotta live in that community, I don't need to go there.
Well, they're asking for the mayor to be...
I'll build an audience stand.
So, if you wanna go in the audience, fine, and you're gonna be there, too?
I'm gonna be there.
I guess we gotta advertise.
Go past, go past, square.
No, no, if I'm gonna go in the audience, you know, after.
No, no, that's all three of us are gonna be, we gotta, pretty much.
She just says, "As long as I don't say anything."
Sit in the audience, don't do anything, you don't have to notice, but it might be better to do that.
Uh, number twenty-sixth?
Didn't we, didn't we actually pay for the advertisement when we all went to the, uh, school board presentation for the merger, when we all went?
Yep.
I think, I think, it's a matter of if we're gonna have a forum or not, whether forum, we gotta, like I said, buy, pay for the eight hundred dollar ticket to go.
Ask them if they'll take your notice, if you up in there here, we'd all like to come, ask them if they'll take your notice.
Yeah, we could ask them that.
Can't hurt it.
Well, for Rio Tenth, that's, uh, 'cause, yeah, the EPA, you won't see that check for about six months, but you'll, you'll get it, you'll get it, but...
What time's the meeting?
Uh, seven o'clock.
Seven, October twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, that's tentative, but, uh, we're hoping that all the parties, you know, so...
How this lists as a special meeting, but we're not running it.
But, in your notice, Kim, you put the location on it, so, Mike, because Joe off, like I said, just after, okay.
I'm the same municipal board.
And Franklin Township will be having the same type of meeting the day before, so that is...
Right. They initially wanted to have a joint meeting, but there's a couple of things that we're doing different here in Greenwich than what they're doing in Franklin, we didn't wanna have confusion, so, so that's it, um, on the Pay Center water line, so eventually, uh, it's gonna get here, it's been in the process for about twenty-five years, the plus side is that they're gonna pay half of that development, so they're gonna go from the curb to the middle lane, those roads are twenty-five years old, they've never been done, so, Mike, you're gonna have to coordinate something, you know, we'll talk twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, so...
There's an opportunity here.
Yeah, so let's take advantage of it. That's all I have.
Okay. Oh, okay, um, all right, I wanna make a motion to accept the municipal court's monthly report.
Okay. Any questions, comments about it, other than the public defender? Yeah? Roll call.
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Marketa?
Yes, yes.
Now, with that, I, I'm, I reached out to, uh, Mike's office, because our municipal court contracted is due up in June, and so, uh, I've already reached out to Lopecan Township, Mike's office represents Lopecan Township, so he can't actually write the letter that we're interested, but can I get a letter with the right language involved, uh, for both Lopecan and Lopecan, from Mike's office?
You just wanna let them know...
Yeah, I just wanna let them know that they're interested and their, uh, business administrator...
Tim Pfeifer's our conflict attorney, why don't we just have him do the letter?
You know what, Tim can...
Well, Mike's office said that, uh, Kim could write it, or even I could, I would just like the right verbiage, that's all.
So, how's that work? You're, we're reaching out to them?
So, we're reaching out to them for pricing.
And we're also reaching out back to Lopecan?
Lopecan, absolutely.
What about any other towns, or about Franklin?
Well, Franklin, yeah, they're in Norton Township, right, I mean, there's...
That's right, they used to be at Lopec, right?
Yeah, Phillipsburg Alpha's a possibility, but...
Oh, and West Big Mansfield's the next closest one, is that?
Mansfield, uh, three...
They have township, yeah, they got that township in the borough, and...
In Jim, of eighteen.
That's what I mean, the next closest one going that way is Mansfield.
You're almost twenty miles out, so...
So, with that being said, I wanna reach out and start this process ahead of time.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I just want the right verbiage when I, we send it to them. Okay.
You can set a false report.
Well, we've discussed that, but that's over and out, actually.
I said, I will have, I will help Kim write Lopecan's letter, and then if she copies it and sends it to Lopecan...
There you go. Okay. Okay, there you go.
Flashlight and silk?
All right, uh, the environmental commission, um, Bob had the paper shredding, uh, that the clean communities paid for, and it ended up processing almost fifty-one hundred pounds of shredded material through ninety-two residents brought stuff in, and at Staples' price of shredded material through ninety-two residents brought stuff in, and at Staples' price of ninety-nine cents per pound, it was fifty-two hundred dollars that they saved in the community for us spending seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Um, that would be nice to see that become an annual thing, because I think the town will also have an opportunity to take advantage of it that day, because I gotta believe there's stuff that needs to be shredded here.
Do we, do we get recycling credits for that?
Uh, recycling credits is kind, you do, but it's really all in a lump sum based on community and population and all, so, but it, it adds to it, so, but that was a nice job by Bob Etchison.
Yeah, I came down and, uh, he really does a good, he does a lot.
Yeah, yeah, Bob, yeah, he does a lot.
He does.
Yeah, no, he does a lot.
Talks to everybody, has a...
Absolutely. Uh, he was good. Okay, and then, I, I, we got zoning. Um, this wasn't directed tonight to the January folks, but it'll also have an effect onto it. We have another problem property in town that they've been addressing the letters, the chief is about to write formal tickets, um, it, it appears they're ignoring everything. And they may very well not go to court, uh, you know, for the vehicles and the property maintenance, stuff like that, they may... And then it falls back into, according to the zoning book, it falls back to this, this table as to how much teeth, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna go in and remove these five vehicles? And are we gonna go in and remove those five pallets of pavers? Are we going in and removing the twenty tons of stone that have sat on this property for the last four years?
Is this something awful, one of them?
Absolutely. Yeah, so, it, where do the teeth come? I mean, are we all bark and, or, and where's the bite, or, we don't have to decide this now, it's gonna go through a small court process, but, boy, that's gonna come to a front, especially when it comes down to enforcement time down on, on one-seventy-three. Um, so, we need to be prepared as to what legal steps that we're going to do, because if they don't clean it up, it's gonna fall back to us, and Joe, whether we, I would probably hire a private company this time around, I don't know that I would put that much more litigation on the town, but the problem is, we're gonna be forced to do some of these things, and, and we're gonna need to know. Food for thought.
So, this resident's been notified in March?
Oh, absolutely. Tickets are about to be written. Um, there's been a small process, uh, the chief has been with the town attorney's office, they're discussing the proper ways, and so on and so forth, um, but it looks to me like their plan is to ignore us, and so, at some point, which is some other people's plan, uh, uh, we're gonna need to figure out what we're gonna do.
Um, I'll have to add to that, I spoke to Mike about that today, um, he's been in contact with the chief about how to handle all this. He said, going forward, that we would recommend you look to revamp your abandoned vehicle ordinance, it seems to be overly complicated, and there may be a way to streamline it to going forward, there might not be the need for back and forth with the chief, and a better way to...
Well, I, I think actually, the chief and I, I re-pointed something out to him, too, and there might be something simpler than our property maintenance already in the zoning book, and the chief and I did kinda...
He was talking about the vehicles in general.
Right, exactly, so, we're talking about everything, right, right?
You may wanna consider letting us tweak that one, because there may be an easier way for the next time to get, get it that easy.
Yeah, the chief told me that he's been in contact, so... Okay, that's it for me.
You're done?
Okay. Mike?
First question. And, uh, I know I didn't get my engineers report out for yesterday, but I did what I thought, my first crack out of the box, a very different format. Good, bad, love it, hate it, you don't care.
No, liked it, they highlighted in yellow and everything else like that, saved a lot.
And if you print it, you print it out, with the yellow, it comes out a little lighter than...
No, no.
Okay, good, so, continue with this?
Yep.
With this method?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have some comments, wanna email, what's wrong, we'll give it later as long, okay? All right. Now, the report, uh, and we can just flip through and...
Highlights, please.
And just deal with highlights. Okay. Roadway evaluation number two, I handed out, Joe touched on it on his report, DPW, I just handed out a, uh, full spreadsheet, which shows the...
Is this one, this one?
No.
I handed out a spreadsheet earlier for everyone, that kinda just does a quick summary of the program, but today, it finished, which, you know, I, last month, when we talked about the scheduling, I would've never thought that support tonight's meeting would've been done, but it got done, so, happy about that. The, the estimates versus what the, the final bills are gonna come in at, are, I don't know, you wanna call it, uh, you wanna call luck, you wanna call it maybe a little bit of skill, but we're right on point, so, I mean, it's five-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars for us, because if five-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, I think it's a purpose. So, I think, uh, from what I hear, I haven't seen all the roads, I didn't see today's roads paved, I heard they're paved three police, I've gotten a couple calls at the office, and voicemails thanking me from residents, and, because they know we're off to it, so, that's good, man, all right. Uh, the OU two project, uh, Phil Canyon, really kinda talked about the meeting that we had the other day. Um, I did have, as a matter of fact, after Phil left from the first meeting, I stayed for a second meeting. That second meeting was with just the, the Arcadis firm, talked about permitting that's required, moving forward, which, which, which basically, three of the permits, which is four off.
Right.
So, we talked about what information they were gonna have to supply, and turn around time, and things like that, so, um, that was with that Joanne, and those two guys came in and said, late, yeah, those two and Joanne and me, so, all right. Uh, all right. We'll talk about the, the Thomas School Park, we'll wait for the end. Uh, okay, there, oh. Kim, did you?
Um...
The resolutions?
I was in end stage, so, I didn't see the...
Okay, no, they, okay. Okay, we can do it after the fact, there's...
Is it a, is it a sample one?
No.
Is it the standard one that we typically do, or is it like a...
Yes, it's the, it, it, it's, I thought it was, uh, I know she said, but...
Yeah, last night.
Okay.
So, anyway...
So, we have to do, let's do, let's do this. We have to do resolutions in conjunction with the DOT grant application. There's, we're making two submissions, as we talked about, Dumont Road Section Two and Washington Street. So, we'll just put those resolutions on for next month. Is there any meeting before?
They can do a motion.
Oh.
Authorize them, because this is a quarter-year grant, so, one is for, which one?
One is for Washington Street, the one is for, um, Dumont Road Section Two.
All right, so, one is gonna be resolution seventy-five, which will be Washington Street, and seventy-six will be Dumont Road. This is for the MJDMT grant.
How we heard this, sorry.
The resolution basically says that if you get the grant, you execute, execute the agreement, and also what Kim just said, that's all, that's all it is.
We making a motion on that?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to make a resolution based on the engineering clerk's statements.
Don't make it.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Roll call.
Enna?
Yes.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Same, same motion, only thing, different location, Dumont Road, anybody making a motion for Dumont Road resolution?
I'll make it.
Second. Comments, questions, roll call.
Enna?
Yes.
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Yes.
Which, what were two numbers again, Kim?
Okay, um, seventy-five was Washington Street, and seventy-six was Dumont.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I will read, and we've got plenty of time, read, certify, copy.
So, now we're done.
All right, that's great, very good. Okay, we talked about the accessory, started the setback ordinance already, the DPW building. We had a bid opening, and I sent, um, a letter of recommendation out on this, and there's a, a recommendation by our office to make an award to... Make an award for the DPW storage building to Dutchman Contracting LLC. We received three bids, Dutchman Contracting, two fifty-eight, three ninety, Sampson Concrete, three fifteen, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand even, and Conestoga Building at three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. Now, we've reviewed the spectrum, it's to be compliant and complete, our recommendation is, has two very significant conditions, two conditions. One is that Katrina and, uh, County Labor Department's office review the pertinent documents and the bonding, and make sure that's satisfactory, but more importantly, is that all the providing financial search to the project, because it, it is, I understand, a little higher than what we had much of, or thought it was coming in.
Mike, the two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, how much of that was for, we added an extension on, you know, Joe, how much more are we adding onto that building that was originally there?
The original building is thirty by, was thirty by seventy-two, we're going forty by one-twenty.
Okay. Yeah. Insurance issues with that, because obviously, they're not gonna pay for the difference in that, so...
Do we know how much we got in?
Well, I wanna talk about that, too. I don't know. Uh, Kathleen, have they given us any money, insurance money, for the actual building?
Joe and I talked about that the other day, we think that, they've given us basically, like, these chunks of money.
Right.
We think that in possibly the first couple payments, that part of it was in there, but we think more should be coming.
Yes, yeah, because the building was one of the items that was total replacement value, like the fire truck was.
Right.
Some of the other equipment would just add value, and things like that.
So, we need to get the total replacing cost of a thirty-by-seventy-two building, and we got, you know, I mean, this, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight is a forty-by-one-twenty, so, I need to know what the cost, what the replacement cost is of the thirty-by-seventy-two, then we gotta look at what is paid.
And hold this, or do you wanna proceed with this?
No, I think we have to proceed with this, and it's, yeah, so...
Was, was there money put in a few years ago to build a storage building out back the other week?
It's called, it's in that ordinance, um, from two thousand and fifteen, and it's called municipal building improvement storage. I looked tonight, there's...
There's thirty-six thousand, huh?
Yeah, it's not enough to cover the difference of this, 'cause I thought, there's three ways I thought about funding the difference of this. First was to use that insurance money, and when it came in, to do a fully funded ordinance based on that, that return of money. Or, looking at that old ordinance, that's not enough anyway. Third, and the best option is probably just to amend the other old ordinance we just did, because we have a lot of money sitting there that, not a lot, but fire truck came in last, you're not using a portion of it for utility truck, we can reclassify that money to put towards this, it just requires amending that ordinance.
I don't wanna amend it, too, I don't know exactly how much this is gonna cost, and we gotta, what we're getting from the, uh, short, well, doesn't matter, because we, we're gonna, we're gonna pay back the bond from the...
Exactly.
Okay, yes, yeah, okay.
I think we gotta do it now.
Well, I think we gotta do it.
Well, that's why, I said, I don't wanna wait on this, because it's, it's been long enough, and the money's there, we just need to...
Plus, we already replaced equipment that's brand-new now, it's sitting outside, you know, before winter, we might've got that in.
So, I say, award it, the money's there, we just need to do the paperwork now to make that put in all the right spots.
So, you need a motion?
Yeah, Kim, uh... Did you, you wanna maybe make sure you count this?
We are awarding the bid, a little bit, uh, some contracting conditioned upon legal review of the bid for sufficiency and certification of funds by the CFO.
As Luka Chanis said, we make the motion.
Will makes the motion, anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments at this point? Roll call.
Well, the only comment I have is, I really wanna get on the insurance issue, and I'll sit with you on that.
You can just send an email, well, not just, but we have so, about trying to get things together.
Because my question is, if we did get some money in, and where did it go? I, obviously, we used it for other things, but, I mean, we gotta balance the CCO, you know, so...
Well, I'm gonna, now that you've looked at the truth, is I'm gonna send, uh, a copy of the, of the, just the bid to the insurance companies, and I know this is what we awarded them for, to see how much they're gonna pay us.
Mike, what's the start to finish with this project?
I don't know, Joe, with the, is it start to finish?
Start to finish.
Yeah, with the, with the building.
Well, I talked to the one outfit that I was working with, they gave me, like, our estimate numbers, they said, once they were notified, it'd be five weeks to get the materials together, and...
November.
And we'll be...
December.
We're gonna push in November, December.
Yeah, I think the contract we have in the bid, so, it's gonna be days after the date when the contract finishes.
To have it completed?
I think so, yeah. Peter agrees to work substantially completed, it shifts the calendar days.
Substantially, that's appropriate, isn't it?
And then completed and ready for final payment within ninety days.
Well, sixty days.
So, it's like you got ninety days.
December first.
It only takes them five weeks to do, uh...
Just get the building.
To get the building, that should go quick.
The building probably takes...
Yeah, so, that should cover sixty days, you know?
Shouldn't, four, seven.
Yeah, they, they're gonna be, oh, they could, they have to pay with the day's standards.
If the building's up against a non-heated, at least we got the stuff there under cover.
Insulated, electric, stuff, that'll work on getting the heat.
Yeah.
And smoke alarms.
Without...
Smoke alarms.
Is that a real one?
Give a roll call?
I thought it was, it was in the spec for smoke alarms.
Well, oh, yes. We can always add the smoke alarms.
Me?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Or Kana?
Yes, yes.
We can vary with this.
Roll call.
You done, Mike?
No.
Uh, Thomas School Park. Okay. In my report, I, in my Thomas School Park item in the report, I basically said I sent out a separate card form. That card form just went out this afternoon, and I, again, I know it's the day of the meeting. I handed out a hard copy of that before the meeting, 'cause I, I didn't know, obviously, you guys have a chance to read, you do now, before tonight's meeting. I kinda summarized phase one and phase two. Let's talk about phase two first, 'cause that's easy. Uh, talked about the contract, contract Sampson, um, which we've already discussed, and I basically, uh, Mr. Sampson has made a point that he doesn't want to do anything when I have to sign contracts, you know, even like initial mobilization, so, it's important that he, we get the contract to him executing, so... He, we talked about, um, uh, his schedule, which is already different than what was submitted, so, he's gotta modify that, I've asked him to do that. Uh, then, big question. This relates to, a question that was brought up by Mr. Sampson to me, which relates to use of Millings versus DGA Stone for the base of the bike path, of the walking path. I, as I stated, and I think I sent the email to the committee, this was in a back-and-forth with Mr. Sampson and I, week and a half ago, two weeks, whatever it might've been, about the Millings, uh, make sure you guys saw the, discussed it, back and forth. I don't, I had to take any exception, or, I don't even really have a problem, and it actually is probably in the long-term best interest of the town, because it, if, I think it's an item that would, we could work with Mr. Sampson on, if we're gonna give, uh, an essence, throw him his big bone by letting him use Millings versus Stone, the DGA, which he'd obviously have to import and pay for. Um, the problem is, he wants the stockpile on site, and, 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 and just play it around, you use, put it at the end of one of the parking lots, you know, fine. The problem is, as I, as I noted in my report, the size of the stockpile, and the length of time that those stockpiles might be sitting out there are troubling to me. There's no, I mean, if, if it were gonna be, we're gonna do the walking path, we're gonna get the whole thing done in two, three weeks, hypothetically, other than the paving of it, then I say bring it in, you know, but I don't, um, so, I, do you guys have any thoughts or feelings on what...
My first question is, what's the benefit to the town going Millings versus Stone? Is there any benefit?
The benefit to the town is what I said before, a minute ago, that...
Sounds like it was a benefit to him, though, not the town.
Well, yeah, but that benefit to him will be...
I introduce you to this guy.
Are we, go ahead.
Maybe we should discuss that part, you have to session it actually, I think, there's something I want to discuss.
Okay.
So, maybe the time of having discussion, and then he, you tell your guys.
Okay.
Because that's, I mean, to me, it's all based on what benefits the town best, so, not just my opinion on it. If it, whatever benefits the town is...
I have a comment, I'll wait, but I wanna wait until we're...
Because it does regard to contract and going back to including the progress, and it's all things, so, but...
That's, well, that's, that's phase two, so.
Well, regarding phase two, so a lot of people are wondering, target completion, okay? I'm hoping that it's gonna be done before, and that the, that the rec can start using it in the spring?
Unless we get some incredibly courageous winter, there's absolutely no reason that should not be engaged.
All right, there's one way out there.
And just so everybody would, what the phase two is primarily, we'll begin phase one and phase two. Phase two is the county roadway improvements, the concession stand, and the walking path, and some other things as well, but those are the three components of phase two of the project.
Oh, one question on the walking path, too. Is that including the extension into the school property?
Yes, yep.
Has the school been notified that that work's gonna be again, and we're gonna be going onto their property?
I did talk to her, we're gonna, we're meeting, that it'll be sometime this fall.
All right, they just need to be engaged, is all I'm saying, okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Mike, do we have to float a bond for working in the county right away?
They haven't asked us for it. I think because we are a municipal, we're in the form.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. Phase one, all right, phase one is, again, the first two pages of the email that, that I handed out and sent out earlier. Let's just take the topics real quick. Earthworks has been working out of the site, trying to get the punch list items done, and basically get things straightened up, as you've seen them out there working and so forth, so the biggest component of the final work being conducted by Earthworks is we pretty much had them regrade the field one, which is the closest field to Raymond Street, that was really out of whack. We took a bunch of shots into some of those belts and compared the design grading, which was at 1.5% across the field. And it's important, it's, it's gotta be graded right. The, that field was way out of whack, so we put, we restaked it, and that's what, if you see, why is moving all that earth, where athletic, where field one is, that's why, because it's to bring it back into compliance from a grading perspective.
Does that cause the normal settling of the, of the...
No, that's because it wasn't done right.
Wasn't done right first time, okay.
Good, see, yeah, okay. I spoke with, with Jeff, again, Jeff Ciarce from Earthworks, he wants to, this is the second board, he wants to reseed, and he wanted to know, you know, if it was okay. And I said, well, I said, I'd like to go out there again, take a walk around, probably, you know, and so forth, to make sure that you're ready for it, because I gave him a recent punch list, which was over a couple of weeks back. So, he's, he's got a purchase to seed, he actually bought a new piece of equipment specifically to seed this, and he's really, I give him credit from the respect of he's, he really wants to do a good job, he's really hoping that this, this second seeding really takes hold, and we get some nice grass growth, so. Okay, now you get into the permitting. All right, the permitting, and I just strongly recommend that you, you read the email, full items, basically, two, three, four, and five. Okay, I'm gonna try to be brief, because this could go on for a long time. We had a meeting here on Tuesday, represented us from the Open Space Committee, the contractor, our office, Mayor Barsony, Committee Man Caniac, and Jack Templeton from the DCA, and Ken was here as well, and if I forgot anybody, my apologies. It was all about trying to rectify which the permitting snafu that occurred, with a lack of one, for the irrigation line that was installed a few months ago, inspected by our office, but it plumbing permit was never pulled through the DCA. Okay. Jack Templeton made it clear what else he wanted to see, which included signed and sealed plans, other agency approvals, and some other administrative items, okay. That was Tuesday. After that meeting on Tuesday, Mark Fornacari, myself, and Jeff Ciarce sat, we're still here at the building, and basically talked about, okay, how are we gonna facilitate moving this thing to where it's best we can, and as quickly as we can. Let's get this, let's get it done, get these permits, let's go. There was a, a discovery made, and Mr. Fornacari gets, I'll say all the credit for this, I don't, and Jeff as well. There, there was a, there's a item in the code book that basically says the DCA does not have jurisdiction downstream from the backflow preventer, that, that is, there is no jurisdiction, so therefore there's no permit requirement, and there's no inspection requirement. So, based upon that finding, I decided that I needed to go and talk to these guys directly about this situation, because everybody left about the line. So, the next morning, which was yesterday morning, Jeff and I meet at the DCA office at nine o'clock, and courtfully invited in and sat down with both Drew Templeton, the plumbing inspector, Quinn Peterson, excuse me, Drew Peterson, the plumbing inspector, and Jack Templeton from DCA. We go through things, they, you know, they're, they're taking the same position they had about the line, and we pointed out very nicely, very politely, very friendly, about that we didn't necessarily agree, that we thought they weren't, they didn't have jurisdiction. Well, they, they looked, and we were right, and they acknowledged that, and they basically said, you're right, if you put the backflow preventer up by the road, that's like yours, and we got nothing to say about it. So, we left the meeting with that in hand, and again, this is yes, yesterday morning, this is not off the front. I did happen to have a meeting with Bill here yesterday with the OU2 project, so I did relate to him, and knew I was gonna be sending this other email out to, to inform you folks, so, all right. So, we still need to supply them with a plan for the backflow preventer in the details, which I think I'm gonna be submitting, well, I'm gonna provide it to Jeff to submit to the DCA. But basically, as far as now, phase one, and what they're looking, they, the DCA, the rumor mill, the stop work order is completely way, way, way not on the radar screen anymore. Their level of jurisdiction has been really very much minimized, and we're ready to get the job done and get it finished, which is the most important thing in the grand scheme of things. So, basically, that, that's where we're at, and that's the, obviously, the latest breaking developments with the project.
Did you test that line yet?
Well, we tested it when we installed, we did the leak testing.
Yeah, that was before all the stuff was on top of it, but you were supposed to pressure test it after it was in the ground there.
Well, we, obviously, as, that line has given me some gray hairs, and I lost a lot of sleep over that line over the last few months, as we all know. Until, literally, well, until yesterday, I, I thought we might have to dig the hole in it up, I didn't know, so I wasn't gonna test it, obviously, wasn't gonna do it.
Can I talk to you about that idea before we go?
So, so, yeah, we can certainly do that, we'll do that, and Jeff is certainly more than prepared to go ahead and do that, so.
So, bottom line is, as of now, everything's in order?
We, yeah, and, and, yes, and the better part of it is, there's nothing that was done out there that wasn't right. As strange as that may sound, of all the discussions that have had, we've had, we have to, you know, we have to do the testing, like Will said, that's, that's on the plate, that needs to get done.
No plumber has to sign off on anything?
The plumber, yes, the plumber's gotta sign off on the backflow event. We still have to get the permit for the backflow preventer, but we've known that for, that's been the plan all along.
So, that's a bid?
No, because it's gonna be on Jeff's contract. Yeah.
So...
So, I don't, that's a summary, so...
But that sewer line?
Sewer line is signed off by me, there's no requirement for the DCA to do anything.
And Sampson's getting other permits?
And Sampson's gonna get the other permits.
What's the next major job that's gonna start there? Was it gonna be the parking lot paving?
Well, Jeff has, we, we've gotta do enough, yet another inspection. Jeff did do the rolling in a parking lot and so forth, compacted the stone, and especially the, the main parking lot, the main drive aisle, of course, we told him that, we're looking at, get the co-op to come in, to put the base course down on that, so that it get, you know, not, not the side.
So, sir, by and knows, we got the concession stand, the pavilion, we got the walking path, and the parking lot, right?
Yeah, but the parking lot is not part of phase two, it's Sampson's phase two, that's what I, I'm getting caught.
I'm just looking to see, what's the next, out of those things, what's being worked on first?
Well, they're trying to pull the permits for the concession stand, get that started. If this, if the issue of the Millings gets, you know, one way or the other, that that could be part of, of, that could be part of phase two, or the first part of phase two.
I was gonna say, you're not, you're not gonna pave that, and dump the concession stand, right?
Paved what?
Parking lot.
No, broadly, we're gonna put, just, just with base, just with base course, because you can't...
I was saying, with, with in driving machinery and dump trucks and everything else going there, shouldn't we pave it at the end coming out?
Well, we thought that to have a, because here's the problem, if you, if you don't pave it, it's gonna get really beat up, it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna get more beat up than if you do pave it. You know, you've got a six, you're gonna, you've got a six-inch thoroughly compacted stone base, then you're gonna have four inches of, of base course. That's, as long as, you know, truck drivers aren't stupid, and, and they should be okay by it, you're not gonna have gigantic tandits out there, because it's a small building. I don't know, so.
Okay. Just a few eight thousand pounds, I don't know, right?
No. It's like being a sport, to be honest. So, all right, then, I guess there's your update.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No new potable water line going in? This two inches gotta cover?
No, absolutely not, and thank you for, if there's any confusion about that, this is very important. The two-inch line that's in the ground is strictly for irrigation, not potable water. That's part of the reason, and that's been the way, that's been the, the decision that was made a while back. There will have to be another, probably a one and a half inch plastic pipe that goes in at some point to serve the concession stand as potable, so.
So, you have to run another line from the street, or from that water line?
No, from the street.
I thought we, I thought the original water line was supposed to take care of the concession stand and the irrigation.
Well...
So, now we gotta put another water line in out there?
That, well, that's, okay, that's actually been the case for months now, but, yes, the two, the two inches that's out there is irrigation only, that's the, if, from the, from the spec and the design of these hoses, these tip co-units, and these hose reels, for the, for the fixture count, for the sinks and toilets in the concession stand, there, there, it was determined that, that two-inch line is dedicated for irrigation, and that a one and a quarter, one and a half inch being installed for potable.
Couldn't put that in the same hole, and had it all dug up?
Well, that wasn't Jeff's, when he, you mean when he put the original?
Yeah, he put the two-inch line down, couldn't he have dropped an inch and a half in there, instead of digging it all up again?
Well, but that, this, this has evolved to be where it, it wasn't, that wasn't the case then, clearly, we would, we would have done that. The, the two-inch line that originally went in the ground was supposed to be for potable. It, it was determined by both Aqua and other parties that it wasn't gonna be satisfactory, so that's, that's where we're at, but we, I mean, that's, if there was any confusion, that's kinda been the case for a while, I mean, with this separate lines. If that wasn't in clear, or what may known, or whatever, then my apologies, but it's, that hasn't been, it's been discussed a lot.
Okay, you done, Mike?
Yes, if you guys have any questions, I'm, I'm done, yes, I am.
I must have missed that one.
Do you have any reports?
I do not, but, um, about the...
Okay, I'm gonna jump over executive session for the benefit of the audience. Let's do old business, move this to a couple of public comment, then we'll come back to executive in case they don't wanna hit it around, so. Old business, emergency squad appropriation, you have any questions on that, Paul?
No, no, we're, we can't answer that question until November.
Okay, do you have any old business they wanna bring up? New business, anybody have any new business?
You know, what we have is, well, from the two, means a broker for solar, who went to present a bid for solar for the pump station, as well as this building. He can try to reduce our electric bills by forty, fifty percent, he said, so, we're paying over seven hundred a month just for the pump station, so, it's not gonna cost, it's not gonna cost the town anything to do the survey, so, I'd like to see him coming in October.
Okay.
All right, so I don't think you need a motion.
No, I just wanna put him on your agenda for October.
Yeah, so, all right.
On my new business, I have something. Over the last couple of months, when I've been out at different occasions, seniors through one, and some people, since they got their tax bills, have asked questions about, you know, obviously, how the money's being spent, and increases and things like that, so, when I was at the senior meeting, someone had suggested that maybe I send out some type of a update or a letter stating on what we've been doing, how the township's progressing, and how we're using our tax money, so, I'd like to put together an information page and mail it out, so I'd like to get the approval from the township to, to expend those funds to do the mail out to taxpayers. So, I would make the motion, I'll make the motion that you authorize me to send out that information, and that, you know, paid for by the township.
How much is, do you have the money for it?
I can have it in, I have it as a post, one hundred, under the thing that's under the...
Yeah, we should have it in there.
It's a bad man, or you felt trouble with, but always, there's nothing in it, and you know, if he writes that, well, there, um, Dan's present, she has a phone card.
Yeah.
So, I was gonna say, couldn't we put it in one of the envelopes going out for tax or anything?
They already went out.
They already went out, yeah.
People got to go in all this, so...
And do you want it to go to commercial, or you just want it to go to residence?
Uh, uh.
You know, because they can have Eloise just kind of off a list.
Yeah, we gotta go to residence, I think we should send it to, oh, deep, I think.
Yeah, no, I agree, you know, they're not gonna get it, they're gonna just...
Put a green one to that.
So, we just get, what's up?
Green one to that, you see, bro. Put a letter to the resident.
I think it's a more personal...
Yeah, I'd rather see it go to everybody individually, yeah, and...
I just didn't have postage.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I mean, how many people, I read the green, green one to that, you know, but it's real quick read, unfortunately, like, you know, six pages, and you're done.
All the motions are, anybody want a second?
I'll second it, okay.
Yeah, comments, questions, we should have been saying this, but, any, any more comments, questions? Roll call.
Yes, yes. It's for a second.
Yes, yes. Okay, I'll make a motion, we open the public comment period for members of the public to come up and make their comments. Again, we need your name and address before you speak, anybody wishing to come up and say anything at this point, man?
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
All in favor, all right. It's getting late, trying to rest things.
As far as your agenda is concerned, I never heard the animal control monthly report.
It was in the agenda.
It's included in the minutes?
Well, is it, is it something that we, from here, that I missed or...
It's usually just approval of the report.
Yeah, it's just an approval of the report, right?
So, there's no report to, that, I'm just concerned if it's something that, you know, full contribution to the story.
Yep, I understand.
No, there's nothing with, with the area, it's just more of like dog bites, cat bites, picking up animals on the side of the road.
And I was going along those same lines, I'd like to give out to you what I referenced before, which I mentioned earlier, which is the actual wording in the ordinance that pertains to a kennel being operated in such a manner that it's not a nuisance as to noise in the neighborhood, and that the animal control officer, his duty is to perform and enforce the provisions of this chapter. So, we do have an ordinance that does have some control feature in there as far as keeping the noise down, and maybe as an enforcement thing, it might be easier for everybody concerned of the neighbors, as well as the enforcement aspect of the ordinance, to be able to enforce what is already part of the law, of the... The enforcement is already part of the law, of the community. So, it's hard to get it right.
Yeah, no, I, I was gonna ask you, all the, you saved me a lot of time looking things up. You rattled off a whole bunch of numbers before. I like them. So it makes it easier for me to find, sure. That zoning book is this thick. It takes a long time to find stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, I mean, the report is simply this. There's a, like, on August third, a dog was found taken to a shelter. Another stray dog was picked up, but the owner recalled, came to claim it. Loose dog on another road, couldn't find him. Finally found the owner after about forty minutes. Squirrel in the garage, a dog bite on Grange Ridge, and stray cats, so.
There's reference to, um, the dog that is case for January last week, was it active in current January?
No, no, but maybe she wasn't notified.
She wouldn't be having that report. Wouldn't be on the report.
So the police, so the police will have that report, but she may not have it. Right, so.
But I just wanted to let you know what's on there, so you don't think, we're trying to slip one through. We didn't think anybody really would hear about the cats and the dogs around the street, so. What? Okay, anybody else? Motion to close public comment.
I'll make it.
Second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion to go into executive session.
Make the motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks to all who present tonight. Yeah, I'm gonna go. Now they need to break tips.
Joe, are you sticking around? Are you sticking around? Maybe.
Five, we better be out of here by eleven fifteen, eleven seventeen.
I make a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. First order of business, I need a motion to pay purchase orders 171084 and 171086 to Finelli Consulting for general engineering duties and engineering work done on Thomasville Park.
I'll make it.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? I mean, roll call.
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Or is it?
Looking for someone to make a motion to adopt resolution number 201777. Uh, where the township, also, I request land use board to investigate whether property commonly known as Block 23, Lot 32 should be designated in an area in need of redevelopment.
And I'll second most of those.
Andy Thomas, questions? Roll call, please.
Kenya?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Spencer?
Yes.
Or is it?
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Thank, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, Frank, I know you're a good man, but... Ray Buckwalter.
Satisfied you were something.
Is on the land use board. Once I heard you, I was one of the professional. Fifteen years with Lebanon chemical, grassy, fertile tar diseases. And the other gentleman was from GMF Turf, he knows Athletic Fields. We were up there, and then I'm gonna take my own. This guy's the one who threw, I saw no sign of red thread whatsoever, none. When we, the three of us heard that, we were like, no way.
Who, who gave you that diagnosis for red thread? That was the, what was that?
Apparently, anybody who knows lawns and grass and disease, that, like, did you, like, drive by, knew what happened? Did you know?
No, I, well, I was just telling Frank, I was out there with Ray Buckwalter. Fifteen years with Lebanon chemical turf.
Oh, wow.
You know, and he knows lawn diseases. I mean, he specializes in that stuff. I was out there with, did he say red thread?
No.
Oh, he didn't? No. And there was another guy from CMT Turf, Scott Kralaski, he's another professional.
You went there before, after, before, like, four?
Oh, way before. We were, I was there a month ago when the problems started. Well, I didn't, we were discussing this, but to make a long story short, all of a sudden, the red thread conversation came up. I immediately talked to both of those guys. And I said, "Look, we were all out there," and Ray and I were out there two different times. And we turned around and he said, "No, there's absolutely no sign of red thread." Now, I hope...
So what caused this to die? Just the low cutting of it?
No, and I'm gonna question that too, because it did not cut it low. Well, we, we think that there was certainly some environmental situations, because even though we were on monumental amount of rain, a lot of it was washing off. You know, there wasn't soaking rains. I think it was in the seed mix. Because in the one common area right here, this is the seed mix that Jeff used right here, Ray Buckwalter immediately walks up to me and he says, "Jesus, Paul, there's tall fescue in the, uh, in the permanent thing." And there's no tall fescue, but the tall fescue is what's surviving up there right now. Now, we thought, myself and the other guy, thought that the crowns, a lot of the crowns might not have died off. I think up in the upper right-hand corner, they clearly have. Um, there's, you know, there's fifty cents a pound perennial rye, and there's a dollar nine perennial rye. Think the variety was just alright. Uh, I think there was a couple of issues. The mowing, although the one mowing was probably a little behind, he never originally mowed under four and a half inches. Shouldn't have a brownout under those conditions. I think a lot of his mix, and I'm not quite sure where he did, and, and again, and like, and my first question from Ray, he said, "Paul, have you ever seen red thread draw a perfectly straight line?" I said, "No, sir."
Yeah, I have that line.
Really? I said, "No, sir, I haven't."
Yeah.
And red thread is also susceptible to the, the seeding in the Athletic Field. That's the same type of variety. There's not a lick of it there. You know, so it'd be very hard to assume.
I always heard that Kentucky blue is what was, was, was the problem. Uh, I don't know. That's, again, that was one of the guys at Mark's, okay?
Right.
So I don't know.
I mean, Kentucky blues, they all have specific problems. And yes, fertilizer, as soon as you get red thread on your home lawn, the first thing, a low dose of nitrogen will rectify the problem. You know, da, 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 da. So you, you move forward with that type of a situation. Now, as for his window of, you know, make, pushing you into, to doing that, 2010-10 has at best a, a four-week residual. Um, it could have gone down after the seed had gone down, it could have gone down beforehand. It wasn't that window of opportunity. Um, I'm right now doing fall seedings with a slip seeder and putting a starter fertilizer down of a very similar nature. I'll be doing that for the next four weeks. Perennial rye will grow with soil temperatures of fifty-five degrees.
And to me, it makes sense. You're the lawn expert.
Well, I am and I'm not, but...
I don't have a problem having you sign off on stuff.
Right, I mean, I am and I'm not, but, so when we heard, but, and I immediately said, I'm like, "Shit, really? I missed that?" But then I immediately called these other two guys, and I'm like, "They're like, I mean, they're like, Paul, what are you acting crazy?"
Mike, we were approached as if it was an emergency situation, right?
Well, yeah. And, and the bottom line, and, and again, when it came down to it, is the phone call still should have gone to Joe. Say, "Hey, Joe, this is what we need to do," because he's building new ground super intense. Everybody needed to be involved, but it started right there, that's all.
But I didn't know that Joe was involved, and I just probably know that...
He's buildings and grounds.
No, but I didn't know that he was involved with the seeding or the...
He's not really, but he's still buildings and grounds. If all of a sudden we're gonna throw something new in, it should probably, I mean, the water line, that's, it's just a pecking order. Just a pecking order.
I mean, I have no problem if you wanna be like, like the advisory, you know, for the lawn owner. Yeah. Because I don't, I don't know, I'm going by what you tell me.
No, no, and again, well, see, I don't wanna be going head to head with Mark on stuff either, man, because he's a guy that most, you know what I mean? But, you know, I...
So now I'm gonna go back to Mike and say, "You're wrong," and get this off.
Well, but, you know, and that, that's why I'm like, well, if there was truly a soil test, we would know.
I thought it did something.
Well, at the beginning of the project, I mean, if you were gonna diagnose with red thread up here, but, see, red thread is such a common problem, it wouldn't surprise me if it was there, but it wasn't the cause of worry. Straight lines, not the hair.
And the number of the line you want? I'll be sure, there you go. Yeah, that's right, that was, we're locking the building up.
But he hardly needed to be done. It was a good one.
Alright, so yeah.